We couldn't have won the National Safety School of the Year and Outstanding Safety Project of the Year without your help. And then Frankie Maamblay also won the National Student of the Year Award. What we're done to do right now is play the video Knoxville, Tennessee, Channel 8 interviewed our students. Out of all the students there, they interviewed ours. So we're gonna go ahead and play that right now.
Avoiding this worst case scenario. Starting with education.
The people are not aware that driving is one of the riskiest activities that two will be engaged in and that traffic practice are one of the leading causes of human deaths.
Brett Robinson with the American Driver and Product Safety Association says everyone needs to be aware of the danger.
Each driver puts two or three friends in the car. That's when they are the most distracted.
Driving instructor Greg Mangan.
The teens often learn bad habits from their parents.
Teens like Park Mitchell and Frankie Maamblay are getting the safe driving message to friends.
And I've been a witness to many people changing their playlists on phones, their phones into text messages, and calling people while they're driving.
Driver safety is probably most important when you're a teen because that's the part where you're not focusing on the safety part. And so it's our job to make sure that people our age are doing that.
New technology in your car could mean adult drivers can be distracted by all the bells and whistles.
And it is important that you know how to set your vehicle's features before you start driving and not try to make adjustments to your technologies while you're driving.
Timeless reminders to put safety first on the road and new ways of getting the message out.
I think it's that peer-to-peer talking.
In Knoxville, Ann Brock, WVLT News.
So you can see here all the awards that they won this year as far as at the state level and at the national level. We couldn't do it without the administration school board support.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Hey, Sophie, Nan, and Judy, and why don't you guys all come up and stand behind the podium, behind all of your hardware? And Catherine, you wanna get a picture? Oh, Judy, come on in. Congratulations, you guys.
Okay, continuing with citizen statements, we had three emailed to us. The first is from Carol Lichtensteiger. USD 116 has a better understanding of the COVID pandemic and public health than many surrounding schools. However, the policies announced in the latest superintendent update and the draft of a flyer, beginning of the year info are not enough to maximize COVID safety for our school community. The proposed mitigations need strengthened. Mask mandate, the district's continuation of the universal indoor masking policy is evidence-based. However, we have to do better than last year when masking policy adherence was inadequate. The effect of poor masking in, on our in-school viral spread this past year was minimized because most students were in small cohorts, relatively few students were on campus, and the wild type and alpha variant were circulating, not the delta variant. The flyer draft suggests a warning system for mask misuse by students, but what we need is willing, enthusiastic, 100% modeling by all adults in the buildings. Modeling is not easy. Look at the coach at a recent school board meeting with his nose uncovered and no one reminded him to fix his mask. Incidents of poor mask compliance by students this past year correlated with the failure of the staff to properly wear masks and with staff failure to convey the value of masking to the students. Masks should meet CDC quality guidelines, not all masks do, and fit snugly over the mouth and nose. Also, CDC's guidance to fit surgical masks should be followed, something that was lacking this past year. In addition, mask hygiene needs to be taught to everyone and likely will require students with physical education, hence sweaty mask to need two masks per day. COVID testing. The flyer indicates that COVID testing protocols will be established during the first few weeks of school. This delay in initiating testing is a mistake. Testing needs to start the week before school starts. For optimal safety, all unvaccinated staff and students should be tested twice weekly until fully vaccinated with the testing starting the week before school starts. All vaccinated staff and students should be screened once, one to three days prior to the start of school. COVID-19 vaccinations. Vaccination should be required for all staff and all age-eligible students. Vaccination is the number-one way to protect people and stop the pandemic. The district has the right, the obligation, to require vaccinations for public health. None of us have the right to put others in harm's way. Only the exception to vaccination would be the rare medical contraindication. Distancing. Distancing is an important mitigation. The distance change from six feet to three feet was based on evidence from earlier, less transmissible variants, and the shorter distance did not apply to adolescents and communities with high transmission, which is where Champaign County is currently. Distancing guidelines do not take into account that virus hangs in the air, hence the need for quality masking and room ventilation. The minimum six-foot distance should definitely be met while eating. Also, given the delta variant and its transmissibility, the opening institute day should be a hybrid meeting. Don't risk a super-spreader event before the students even arrive. Ventilation. Ventilation is critical for controlling viral spread. The district has announced, but not specified, ventilation upgrades in the schools. The ventilation upgrades should be transparent to the school community. Also, we can't install a MERV-13 filter or plug-in-a-room air purifier and call it done. Equipment needs to be, needs routine documented maintenance. In addition, there has been no indication of monitoring for adequate air exchange rate in classroom. The concentration of CO2 in the air should be monitored when students are present, and ventilation adjusted so that CO2 does not exceed 800 ppm. Now is not the time for COVID mitigation complacency or to forget that the pandemic is a public health phenomenon. The need to adjust personal actions for COVID mitigations is hard for some people. The need for viral mitigations for the common good is similar to why we have rules restricting smoking in public areas and prohibiting driving under the influence of substances. Such actions put others in harm's way. None of us have that right. Let's maximize the COVID mitigations and have a great, safe school year. Second is from Karen Mortensen. Dear Board of Education, as you finalize plans for the start of the school year, I urge you to continue to require masks indoors, at least for unvaccinated staff and students, and preferably for everyone. I think that, I think that it will be very difficult for teachers, students, and staff to know who should be wearing masks if you allow unvaccinated individuals to go without. Currently, the number of cases of COVID is increasing rapidly in Champaign County, including among children and teens. If circumstances improve later on, then the district can consider whether to change mask policies at that time. I appreciate the high priority that USD 116 has placed on safety throughout this pandemic. Karen Mortensen, UHS Prep, Karen. And the last is from Honey Thrunkel. Hello. Once again, I plead to have USD 116 reinstate remote learning. My children are assigned up for homebound, but with the new evidence about delta being transmitted, transmitted by even those who are vaccinated, a teacher going from home to home or a classroom to my home seems a risk to my kids. I'm not just a crazy person, but rather the mother of a child with severe anoxic brain damage who utilizes three different breathing machines, two to four times each daily, among other severe medical issues. When they say COVID affects mostly kids with underlying conditions, they are talking about my child. Having someone enter and exit various homes of immunocompromised or otherwise susceptible children in succession makes me very nervous. I cannot both homeschool and be caregiver to my children simultaneously. Please give them the opportunity to receive a safe, quality education as it's the right. Thank you. Holly Thrunkel. Are there any other citizen statements that didn't show up late? Okay, thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our camera operator. Brandon Gasper is running our camera first tonight, so thank you so much. Moving on to, there will, 5:00, call for executive session after current meeting. There will be an executive session after the current meeting for the purpose of litigation, and we'll read the formal motion at that point in time. At this point, we'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passed. There are no administrative reports tonight, and there is no policy review. So moving straight on to 10 dot 2, our administrative personnel item. Call Angie forward.
Good evening. Earlier this spring, Human Resources posted a new position supported by the Board of Education, Administration, and Staff. The position created was a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, also known as Director of DEI. This new role is critical to moving Urbana forward, where we have a designated position to bring forward data, professional development, and innovation for improvements needed to address the academic, social, and emotional needs of our most underserved students. The purpose of creating the position was to have an administrator work directly with the superintendent, district and building administrators, and staff to reach all of our goals in providing an equitable education for all students. Of the eight applicants, four applicants were qualified to hold this position. Excuse me. On July 7th, a team made up of approximately 15 building and district administrators interviewed all four candidates. On July 13th, a team representing the UEA also interviewed all four candidates. Both interview committees were in agreement on the first-choice candidate. On July 20th, the top two candidates were brought forward to Superintendent Dr. Ivory Tatum and her district administrative team. The team was also in agreement with the two interview committees. We are thrilled to bring forward Dr. Brandon Caffey to be considered for our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Dr. Brandon Caffey is a 1991 graduate of Alton Senior High School in Alton, Illinois. Dr. Caffey received bachelor's degrees in sociology in 96, history education in 2000, a master's degree in education administration in 2002, and a doctoral degree in education administration in 2019 from Illinois State University. Continuing a family legacy in education, Brandon previously taught in the Peoria Public Schools as a history and social science educator. He also served as the principal of Greeley Alternative School in Peoria and an assistant principal of Peoria-Richwoods High School. A resident of Normal, Illinois, Dr. Caffey currently serves as the assistant principal of Normal Community West High School. He is the creative visionary and founder of the Normal West Black Student Union, the Yuma-Jah African-American High School Graduation Ceremony, and the Rite of Passage, Father and Son Breakfast in the Bloomington-Normal community. His professional and civic involvement has earned various accolades, including Peoria School District Principal of the Year, the Town of Normals Martin Luther King Jr. Human Relations Award, Alton High School Distinguished Alumni, and Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity's Brother of the Year in the Illinois District and Midwest Region. Dr. Caffey's civic, fraternal, and community activities include the Dunbar Masonic Lodge Number 97 FM, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central Illinois Advisory Board, March of Dimes, Habitat for Humanity, Bloomington-Normal Minority and Police Partnership, President of the Onward and Upward Educational Foundation Incorporated, and Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and the Wright Track Educational Foundation. To say that we hit the goldmine is an understatement. So Dr. Brandon Caffey, we would, we are so thrilled and happy to welcome you, your wife, Shamari Caffey, and your three beautiful daughters, Brooklyn, if you want to give a little wave, Brooklyn with the B on her shirt, London, I'm gonna give a little wave, London, and Dallas down on the end. So welcome to Dr. Brandon Caffey, Ms. Shamari Caffey, and Brooklyn, London, and Dallas pending your approval.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to accept this appointment.
This requires a roll call vote.
All right. Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pelosi?
Yes. So welcome, Dr. Caffey.
Welcome.
And then just hit the green button, or hit the button so it turns green. There you go.
So to the Board of Education, to Dr. Ivory Tatum, and to the entire administrative team of this great school district, I am extremely excited about this opportunity. I look forward to doing great work. This is very much important work. It needs to happen across not only this region, but across America. As we have students who are suffering, we have students who are in need, and it's all around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I am certainly grateful for this opportunity to lead in this area, and I look forward to collaborating with you all and making a difference in the lives of our children. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Very happy you're here. Study topics, 9.1 CDC guidance and back-to-school logistics presentation.
All right. Can you guys hear me? I came over here in case I have to take my mask off. If you can't hear me, I'm far enough away from everyone, but you can hear me? Okay? Okay. I will leave it on there. Okay. Exciting topic tonight. I know everybody has been anxiously awaiting this discussion, and we've been sharing information, and we've been talking with our union, with UEA, with our administrators. We've received, as you heard from the public comments this evening, a couple of comments. But we are really looking forward to having our students back in person and doing it safely. So what I'm gonna do this evening is really just kind of walk us through the guidance, talk about the plans for the district. As you know, we will have a more robust plan that we'll put online like we did last year. It won't be 60 pages. It'll be shorter. But tonight, we're just gonna hit the highlights, and I think the most important information that most people are interested in hearing about. Stop me as we go. If there are specific questions that you have, I was grateful to be able to meet with a couple of you to kind of talk through this via two-on-twos with myself and Mrs. Norton ahead of time. I know Laura sent me a couple of comments via email. So if you have not had a chance to really ask her questions and dig deep, this is the time to do that. We will be posting, the PowerPoint is in the process of being translated, so we will post the PowerPoint, the one-pager John had up earlier, and the plan this week for our families and staff to preview. So the CDC guidance. I know tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about a resolution. So tonight, after we talk about this, thanks, Cory, we are going to talk a little bit about a resolution which gives administration the, just an opportunity to change quickly. I know last year, my favorite word of the year, well, maybe not my favorite word, but a word we used a lot was pivot. So we quickly pivoted just in the last week or two since June. There have been different reports from CDC, from IDPH. The most recent guidance that we're gonna talk about tonight is the updated guidance from the CDC that was released July 27. So what were the key takeaways from the CDC guidance? Prevention and mitigation strategies are still very important. I know a lot of districts, I've been, gosh, in the last three weeks, I feel like I have sat in multiple webinars with attorney groups, with regional superintendent groups, with state superintendent groups. And this is basically all we are talking about because, of course, this is the most important thing that we can be discussing at this point in the year with two weeks before our students return to our classrooms. But prevention and mitigation are definitely our top priority, as is in-person instruction. In our district, as I mentioned in my superintendent update, we have been talking all summer about universal masking and only thinking about masks optional at a much later date. So I am glad that the CDC guidance mirrored what we were going to do anyway, which was to really focus on universal, universal mask-wearing. So part of what the key takeaway from the guidance is, and we'll talk about this a little bit later in the slides, but the more distance we're able to give our students, the better we will all be. There's a lot of guidance around vaccinated students, unvaccinated students. Because we are focusing on universal masking, we will not have to be as tied to that because we're expecting everybody to mask. The changes, any changes that we make moving forward through the rest of this, these next few weeks, this next quarter, will be very slow, will be gradual, and we will make sure that we look at all of our layered strategies. And if we peel any of them apart, like I kind of look at this like a big onion, right, with all these layers, I will make sure that those will be changes that are made very slowly and gradually. So what are the risks? There are a lot of pros and cons. Our biggest ask and our biggest goal is to control outbreaks and, and to keep our students in school. We'll talk about close contacts and quarantining and what that means in terms of being able to keep our students and staff in person longer and for a more sustained learning opportunity. But controlling outbreaks is one of our biggest goals. Returning to universal masking, we never really moved away from it. We have had students in our buildings all summer. In transition programs, we have several programs right now going on called Jump Start. We had students in the buildings in June and July, and we have been masking literally all summer. And I have to say, it has made a significant difference. We've not had, we had our very first positive case last week, and it was an adult, and it was a transmission that was, had nothing to do with school. And it, and we did not have any outbreaks from that because everybody within, you know, the distance of that staff member was masked the whole time. So I feel like our students have done a fantastic job with this. Our staff members have done a wonderful job, and it's been something we have been promoting from the very beginning, and we never really moved away from it. So surveillance testing for students and staff, we'll talk about that. We're gonna continue symptom testing. I have been promoting vaccinations. John Gutzmer, Catherine, we are working with our district nurse, Amy Marks, and we will be promoting several additional opportunities for vaccinations here in the next few weeks. Cohorting. And I know the CDC guidance does talk about, or ISB talks about that too in IDPH, about having separate sections for vaccinated students versus unvaccinated students. When I talk about cohorts, I am talking more so about the elementary students, trying to keep them together, not mixing groups as much as we can. We're gonna do our very best to do that in our, on our buses and in the elementary setting as much as we possibly can. I will talk a little bit more about directional seating and hallways, but our main prevention measures are the same things that we've been doing from the very beginning. Making sure that we're promoting good hand and respiratory etiquette, ventilation. We've added HVAC and air purifier, style of our systems, continuing our cleaning and disinfection measures. I know in the guidance, it doesn't say, we no longer have to do that really intense, high-level cleaning, but we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to touch high-point areas as much as the, high-touch areas as much as we can. We already have the custodial staff in our schools, so we are gonna utilize them and continue to touch those surfaces as much as we can. And something that we've talked to our administrators about and will continue to really push, push until people get tired of hearing it. If you're sick, stay home. And we're going to promote that as much as we possibly can. So I'm gonna move through the slides and kind of break the areas up into sections. So this first section is about mask-wearing, and I believe this is what most people are anxious to hear about. So the CDC recommendation is the most latest revised, updated guidance in areas with substantial and high transmission. We are currently no longer in moderate transmission. We are now based on our numbers in substantial transmission rates. In K through 12 schools, the CDC recommends that everyone, including fully vaccinated individuals, wear a mask in public indoor settings. So that's for students, teachers, staff, visitors, regardless of vaccination status, in order to help our community, our school community, Champaign County, to prevent the spread of the delta variant and protect others. The guidance also very specifically talks about the bus, and there's a special rule for transportation regarding mandatory universal masking. The CDC recommends all passengers and drivers must wear a mask while on school buses or on other school-provided forms of transportation. And for us, that would include our yellow buses for students, and that also includes MTD. We've never moved away from that. Our drivers and monitors have been wearing masks all summer. Schools should provide masks in the guidance. We do that. We make sure our bus drivers have the disposable masks. So if a student arrives at a bus without a mask, we give them one. One of the things that went away in the most recent guidance was there is no capacity rule. We are gonna do our very best to stick to the 50-seat capacity for our students. We don't have to do that anymore, but we are going to do our very best to do that. We only have 38 buses in the fleet for first students, so there may be some limited or small windows where we have to have more than 50 students on a bus, which we don't often do, but we are going to try not to do that. There's no longer a need for the special seat configurations since the students will stay masked at all times. The guidance doesn't talk about behind the wheel, but as a district, behind the wheel is driver's ed, our lovely driver's ed students we're here tonight, our wonderful project ignition students. We have already made a decision that regardless of the fact that it's not mentioned in the guidance, we are going to be enforcing universal masking in our driver-ed vehicles as well.
So give it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You said to ask as we go along, right?
What's that?
You said to ask as we go along.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So how many seats are on a school bus?
I think our capacity is 71.
Yeah, usually 71 passenger.
That's 71 sitting two per bench, or what?
Does it include what?
I mean, how many benches are on a school bus? Like, is 71 two per seat? And there's...
Three per seat.
So that's three per seat? So 50, how many seats are there is what I'm getting at. What's 71 divided by three? So...
Oh, I don't know how many.
It doesn't come out even. That's about 23 or so. So if you have 50 in a bus, you're saying there are two per seat.
So what we were doing...
And that's shoulder to shoulder.
So what we were doing was when we were remote and we had small numbers of students riding, where we were really doing one per seat, and we were allowing siblings to sit together. This spring and this summer, we have been kind of following that 50, there was a 50-rule capacity this spring in the, in the older guidance, which they've since gone away from. We've not had one positive case or one close contact that we were able to track back to a yellow bus.
I'll say congratulations, but I just want the parents at home listening to know that they will be shoulder to shoulder on the school bus if the 50 is the amount.
Okay. All right. Mask-wearing. So in Urbana School District, given the mixed given the mixing of vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff in our buildings, and the fact that vaccines are not available to children under 12, we will start the universe, the year with universal masking at all levels. We'll evaluate this mid-September. What we talked about with middle school and high school prior to the CDC's most recent guidance change last week, we were going to kind of use September 13th as like a checkpoint for us to look at where we were in terms of vaccination rates, positivity rates in our county, and then just reevaluate. I know at that point, a lot of districts that are universal masking are looking at maybe what they might start doing, again, as we peel away the onion and kind of peel away these gradual layers, is if we've been able to kind of hold all of our mitigations firmly from the start of the school year, that would be a point where we might say to the high school, if you've got a teacher and they're six feet away from the students and they're doing an activity where they really need to have their mask off, would that be, and they're vaccinated, would that be an opportunity where they could take their mask off? But again, we are not saying we're going mask optional at that point. We're just saying we will evaluate that and kind of look at that and see where we are mid-September.
What are you actually going to be measuring at that point? You know, so if it is going from substantial to moderate, are you looking for the county positivity rate, 70%?
So right now, I have been working with Champaign Public Health, and they've shared all of their data dashboards with me. So I'm able to see data beyond just what is on their public dashboard. They're sharing the vaccination rates for the county, the vaccination rates with me by zip code. I can see positivity rates by county, by zip code, number of cases daily. So I have quite a bit of data that I can look at in order to help us make some decisions when we get to that point.
Are you giving us any more details than you're just going to look at it? Because there's an agenda item giving you basically full authority to do whatever you want to, so...
Well, if we're still in substantial transmission, of course, we wouldn't even be having that conversation. So it would all depend on where we are in terms of our transmission rates and if our vaccination rates can stay stalled and we don't move anywhere with that. So...
So no details of any kind of being revealed at this point?
So we've talked about that. I mean, I could pull up the CDC page and give you all the numbers, but we've had that conversation a lot, and that is in all of our documentation online.
If you said something like, "We're not going to even think about it until we're below 5% for a 7-day positivity rate in our county or in our zip code or anything like that," then I'd say, "Okay, that makes sense."
Well, that would be the definition of...
But you're not saying anything like that.
But that would be the definition of what's moderate. And right now, we're not in moderate. We're in substantial, which is more than 8%. Okay. So I know we have some people in our community who may not be looking forward to wearing masks, but I want to say to those folks, our students are a captive audience. They're with us five to six hours a day. I know prior to the world, in our world, kind of going back to masks, people were in and out of stores and restaurants wearing masks, or not wearing masks. But for our students, it is very different, right? Like, they're with us five to six hours a day. It's not the same as taking a short trip into Myers. So I think people felt very comfortable not wearing their masks. And I'm glad that we, as a district, have made the decision to keep our masks on because it has really helped our outbreak and our numbers stay really low. I'm looking to see if there's anything else I want to say on that page. Also related to mask wearing, PE. This is, we've been getting a lot of questions about physical education because it is really hard. I mean, I'm kind of having a hard time, you know, talking consistently behind my mask, and it's warmer in here. But once they're outside, they have activities that they want to do in the gym. So the CDC guidance says mask wearing is generally not required outdoors. We have been allowing the summer school programs and all the transition programs. When the students are outside and they're able to distance due to the nature of activity, we've allowed them to have their masks off. That is in line with the CDC guidance. However, when the PE teachers bring the students back in, they will have to stay masked at all times. And we'll work with our PE teachers to make sure that they're planning lower-risk activities to allow them to greater distances inside the building.
Clear distinction between elementary schools and other schools since none of the elementary-age students can be vaccinated. So you have no vaccinated students pretty much, and they're not required to wear masks outside.
So the CDC says...
Like, as a group, because I'm just saying, I think...
Sure.
Taking into consideration pretty seriously and justified concerns with a variant that is incredibly contagious and knowing behaviors of younger students and distancing or wanting to distance. It almost seems like a harder battle to be like, "This is on time, this is off time, this is on time."
Right.
And as opposed to saying, "It's just all on time."
All the time.
Because you're all around each other and you're in close proximity, and we want to be safe.
Yeah. And we, Kim and I are meeting with the PE coordinator, actually tomorrow afternoon, to plan for the... He's the elementary PE coordinator, so we're going to meet with him and talk about this specifically and help him kind of plan activities where they can stay masked when they're outside and definitely when they're inside. But that is something we're going to do tomorrow. We have some brand-new PE teachers who are going to need some guidance in this area, especially at the elementary level. We have at least two, maybe three. And so that is something that we're going to be talking about, Laura, is how can we help them plan units and plan activities where they can keep their masks on as much as possible? Any other? Okay. I'm not really going to talk much about sports and clubs because we expect it any day. I've been expecting it since last week, actually, that we will get more guidance from IHSA for the high school and IESA for the middle school. They've not shared anything recently, but of course, we will continue to have all the students stay masked when they're practicing inside. And if they're, these are the CDC guidelines related to what they say should happen for sports and clubs. But we will be waiting for IESA and IHSA. So I know that they're working specifically with Illinois Department of Public Health to share guidance for the schools. So physical distancing. So what does the CDC say about physical distancing? So the recommendation is to implement distancing to the greatest extent possible without restricting the ability to return to full in-person learning. So as we've talked about here, the goal for the Illinois State Board of Education is that all students return fully in person. And they have stressed to us in multiple ways that they do not want us to use the three-feet versus six-feet rules as a measure to not allow students to return to the buildings fully in person. So what we are going to be doing, I'm going to talk about that here in a few minutes, but for non-vaccinated, it's recommended at least six feet. And this is related to mask wearing, so we'll talk about this in a few minutes when we define the close contacts. In classrooms, they recommend at least three feet between students and mask-wearing for all students and staff, and staff until further notice. So in the district, because we are staying universally masked and we are not going with the mask optional, a mask optional program or just an option for families, we're going to follow the three-foot recommendation in our classrooms for vaccinated and unvaccinated since we'll be starting the year all wearing masks. The guidance does not discuss continuing to require the students to face forward, but that is something that we've decided to do, especially at the elementary level where the students aren't able to be vaccinated. We'll continue to focus on individual seating, cohorting at the elementary level. That's much more difficult to do with the middle school and high school as the students will have to change classes. We hoped that we would be able to keep the one-way directional hallways as much as we could. I think the high school is going to be able to do that for hallways, but not the stairwells. So I think as long as the students are able to stay masked, that will make a big difference in the physical distancing, at least through the transitions and the passing periods. We'll continue to make database decisions based on what I've already mentioned, kind of the positivity rates, our community transmission rates, variant rates, vaccine rates, as we continue to look at our three-to-six-foot physical distancing.
Could you maybe clarify some of the disciplinary measures that will take place since a lot of this system revolves around people accurately or consistently wearing masks?
Yep.
So what happens when teachers aren't wearing masks or staff aren't wearing masks, when students aren't wearing masks? I think that's really important because it feels like that's a huge piece of this puzzle. And when that isn't working, then everything starts to fall apart.
Sure. So what we do right now is we use the phrase "mask up" with our younger students and that, just giving them the visuals. I know a lot of our teachers use that, and it seems it works. The bigger conversations that we've had have been at the middle school and high school level because it will be more of a battle of the wills in those settings. So on our other flyer, which I won't switch to, we mentioned that on the one-pager. I've met with the middle school and high school administrative teams, and we've talked about how we're going to handle student discipline specifically. So because we approach everything through a restorative lens, we don't want to be specifically like kicking kids out of class for not wearing masks and having students sitting in Restore U or Restore U Junior because of mask wearing. Our goal was to get them back in school and have them be in our classrooms and not sitting in spaces where they're isolated from everywhere else, everyone else. So we're going to use a very restorative approach. We've talked about giving the students three warnings per class period, "Mask up, mask up, mask up." If a student, you know, a lot of times, part of it is just not having a good-fitting mask and it's sliding down. So helping to make sure that they have a mask that fits appropriately. We have ordered a thousand, I can't remember the huge number of kid masks, the smaller-size masks that we've ordered for elementary and early childhood age students. Those will go really quickly. So we've put in a huge order of additional PPE. We have masks available all over our building, of course. So we'll do our best to make sure that as students are in the building, they have a mask that fits them properly, one. And two, as long as the student is just taking that reminder and not, if they aren't being disrespectful, it doesn't turn into a disruptive event, we decided we will give them the reminders, at least three per class period. If it turns into a situation, just like anything else, you know, sometimes we have students who don't respond or don't respond to correction in a positive way, then that might be when the learning environment is disrupted, then we might have to have a student leave the classroom at that point if they're not going to properly wear their mask. So we have had those discussions. We have a plan for the middle school and high schoolers. I've met with the elementary principals, and we've talked about visuals, circle meetings. But honestly, when I've been out and around in buildings, I very rarely see students, and you guys are out as well as me, but I very rarely see students who don't, who aren't wearing their mask correctly. And if it has slidden down their face a little bit, then somebody just kind of gives them that reminder, and they pull it up.
I can speak to that if you want.
Oh, sure.
So last year, we had one staff member who was told to put on a mask. That staff member did not have a mask on. The good thing is that people in buildings are the first to tell on people that aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And so I met with that staff member, and the second time it happened, they had a written warning. And then we followed the progressive discipline in place for the adults. The first warning is a restorative conversation, and after that, with adults, it's progressive discipline because they are the adults and staff members in our buildings.
And we want our staff to model mask-wearing behavior for our students. So if they're not doing that, then that is where, like Ed just said, that becomes evaluative. It becomes a conversation between an administrator and a staff member that will eventually have to be documented and...
And will students have opportunities as well? Because unfortunately, there are also times when students see adults modeling bad behavior, but they don't have any outlets or opportunities to share that. So how does that go down in this situation? Are there, is this like, are we encouraging them to talk to their, you know? If their teacher's modeling bad behavior, who do they go to?
Oh, well, we have tons of support staff members in the building.
So I'm just saying, is that, that is a conversation that will also be happening with students as school starts. Given the circumstances of the situation, I know there'll be many opinions about who's doing what correctly or not, but making sure that students have pretty clear pathways to share that information.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And we hope all of our students have a trusted adult that if they feel...
And reminding them.
Yes.
Been a while.
Of course.
Well, I was just going to say, I have found that our students are great at calling out things that aren't right for a number of different behaviors. And so I don't see this being any differently. I would encourage parents to tell their, to tell their kids to advocate. And I can also give another message to the administrators to do that as well. And so, you know, we're here to support our kids, and we want adults modeling that. And if they, if they aren't, then we need to know about it.
So, Laura, did that? Okay, yep. So lunchroom spaces are areas that we are really, as you saw in the paper today, I didn't realize they were going to focus that much on our lunchroom spaces in the news gazette today when they reached out to me. But that is an area where we are really doing our best to spread kids out as much as we possibly can. So we've met, I've met with every single principal, Carol, Randy and I, Kim. We have talked through their plans. We have ordered additional seating chairs. We're using multiple spaces at several of the elementary buildings. We've posted for additional staff to be able to help be in multiple spaces. Normally, we only have two or three morning supervision or breakfast, people who are helping with breakfast. So now we're going to have multiple adults helping in that area. At our middle school and high school, as you've seen outside the high school, we have been able to create more outside spaces. So we're going to encourage our students to eat outside whenever possible. We'll use the lunchroom, gyms. Here at the middle school, our portable is finally going to be en route soon. We've had a lot of difficulty getting that here this summer, but it is finally going to be happening soon. So the portable space will be used for lunch. We're using, are we using the decks too? I think both decks, the splash room, the stage. So we have students literally eating all over this building to provide as much space as we possibly can for the students. The guidance, and I don't need to focus on this very much, but there really were no limits on food service. We've had a lot more restrictions on what we've been able to do in terms of feeding the students, and all of those have gone by the wayside. But what we are going to do at breakfast time, just to start us off at the beginning of the year with getting the students back, I know it is not what we really want because we always want to give a hot meal whenever we can. But we're going to start with the bags at breakfast because they are going to be eating at desks and not at the big lunchroom tables all over and sitting shoulder to shoulder like they're used to in our breakfast rooms. Or, and we've been doing breakfast in the classroom at the elementary level. We're not doing that this year, or at least not to start the school year. So we're going to have bag breakfast, which I know is maybe not going to be as appealing to the students, but it will give us an opportunity to transition everybody back to the building. Everyone will have a bag that they'll take to their desk that they'll eat their breakfast at instead of eating in the classroom at the elementary level. We hope we'll be able to provide some hot options, like the hot options that come in the little bags, like they warm up the waffles and the, you know, pancakes on a stick kinds of things that we can... Like they warm up the waffles and the, you know, um, pancakes on a stick kinds of things that we can serve them warm. Um, but again, I think it may not be ideal and you know, we want as many students to eat as we possibly can. But we will um, start off with the bags because that will be a safer way for us to get as many students fed as possible. Uh, through the window that we have uh, to provide breakfast.
I have a question. So the slide says vaccinated, not required to maintain social distance when eating. But the prior slide says you will maintain three feet.
So I think.
For vaccinated, non-vaccinated.
We are maintaining, we are maintaining three feet, Robbie. So yes. I think that is from what the CDC says, but we're not doing that. We are making sure that we have at least three feet in all of our spaces. Um, one other thing that I was gonna say that we've talked about doing at the elementary level is assigned seats. Um, for um, contact tracing purposes, that is going to be a pain for the, the elementary people to keep up with who's sitting where. At lunch, um, but we do think that will help in order for us to make sure that we're not having to put huge classrooms into quarantine. Um, because of a lunch period, um, that we are gonna be able to really monitor that a little bit carefully, um, if we assign seats. So I know that's something we've talked to our elementary um, principals about. We've also talked to the secondary staff that there may be students who, you know, are more, um, who want a more private space to eat. And they may not want to be around, um, you know, larger numbers of students. Um, and we are going to do everything we can to reasonably accommodate those requests if we get them from students that they wanna eat in a. You know, I don't wanna eat in the commons, even though we're gonna have everyone spread out. Um, that they might wanna go eat like in a private room or someplace else. So we'll, we'll try to, to accommodate those as much as we possibly can. So screening and testing. Um, so the CDC guidance basically says if you're not vaccinated. Um, you need to continue to uh, be screened and tested. If you are, uh, you do not have to test. Um, we are going to um, encourage everyone to test, expect, especially our um, non-vaccinated students. Um, we are not mandating it, uh, but we're gonna do everything we can and to uh, strongly encourage uh, families. To uh, participate in our testing and I'm gonna talk about what we're doing for testing here in just a second. We have been asking for vaccination cards, um, since we started the registration process. Sorry, that's not. So since we opened registration, uh, we have been asking students to upload um, proof of vaccination. As of today, we have two hundred and eighty-five students who have done that. That's a small number, unfortunately, um, when you think about the fact that we will have close to two thousand students at the middle school and high school. Um, so we really are going to push uh, these first couple of weeks um, with families. That if your student is vaccinated, um, please let us know and you know, we are gonna, you know, if we, if they take a picture and send it to us. They can email it. Um, if people are having difficulty uploading it as part of the registration process. We will have them work with our SIs, our administrators at all the schools. Um, that information is really important to us, um, because in order to define a close contact, the rules are very different if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. So um, for our students that are vaccinated, um, we really uh, would like families to share that information with us if they can. So we will send out lots of reminders. I've been doing the reminders at the district level right now because we're not in school. Um, but once we're back and the students are kind of there every day, um, our administrative staff and our teams and um. Um, SIs and people like that will be asking for that information a little more intensely than I have been able to do. For our testing, um, John and I have been meeting with um, our district testing coordinator. Who uh, was hired at the end of the school year, um, our district nurse to plan out our uh, testing um, protocols. Uh, we have a testing protocol document online that we will be updating shortly. Um, so as of right now, the plan is that UMS and UHS will have shield. Um, again, we're going to highly encourage our back, uh, non-vaccinated students to uh, participate and screen twice a week. Anyone can test, so if a vaccinated student wants to test, we are not gonna turn them away. Um, or a staff member because of um, we know uh, vaccinated people can um. Um, be infected with the Delta variant. So anyone who wants to participate in shield will be invited to do so. Uh, we have a consent form that we've been using all spring that we will uh, start sharing out with families. Um, for the uh, Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. We are going to pilot uh, screening testing at three of our elementary schools using the Binax. Uh, rapid testing that we've been using at the drive-through. We'll continue our drive-through rapid testing for sta- uh, for staff. And we are going to offer a uh, rapid testing drive-through for families to bring their, not for the whole family. But for a family to bring through their elementary student or their middle school, high school student if they uh, choose. That will be at Yankee Ridge. And John, are we gonna do that once a week or twice now? I can't remember. Twice a week? Yes. Yes. So Tuesday, Thursdays from three thirty to four thirty. Um, the staff drive-through is every morning at seven AM, so our staff will continue to be able to do that. Um, we'll continue to screen student athletes with our uh, Binax, which we've been doing. And we're also going to add shield as another layer for the athletes. Um, and we will also continue to do the symptomatic testing with Binax that we've been doing literally all year.
Are the elementary students not allowed to do shield testing? Or why can't they do that?
We've talked about doing, um, but it is much more intrusive and, go ahead, John.
Uh, they do have age restriction, so not all of the elementary students would be allowed to do uh, shield testing. And it would be part of the third grade and then fourth and fifth grade in the current rollout that they have of the shield. So at that point, like, you, you're really better off testing the whole student population with the test that they are all eligible for.
That is a good answer. And the question obviously is, if you're supposed to be testing the unvaccinated, why aren't you testing the elementary kids? You know, so if shield is only available for certain age groups, then that's a valid answer.
Yes. It's not available for K one-two. Um, we are going to try the Binax and um, we have a meeting set up with the uh, principals um, and our testing team. To work out the details. Um, we also, uh, unit four was, um, we started doing shell, shield testing. We, and we were in a lot of meetings with the uh, unit four team and they were, you know, planning at the same time we were. So they were kinda combining our meetings all the time. And they were testing um, third, fourth and fifth graders with shield. And it was an adventure, uh, teaching those younger students to dribble and collect enough saliva. Um, to be able to get an accurate test. Um, so that's another reason why we thought. We're, we're very familiar with Binax. We've had a good um, positive, you know, rate with it. We haven't had a lot of uh, um, false negative tests or false positive tests using it. So we thought it is, is kind of a, a non-intrusive way to get our elementary schools some screening testing as well. So not only are we asking our, our families to upso- upload student vaccination cards. We have been collecting staff vaccination card information. Um, and our staff members have been going through our hiring, um, their hiring accounts, their uh, personal confidential documents. And uploading their, their uh, proof of vaccination in our talent ed system. Um, this is information that is being monitored at the district level, so we know who those folks are, um, and as well as their principals. Um, so we are really starting the year encouraging everyone to be tested and um, to participate in either the shield or the Binax. We currently cannot require a weekly saliva or rapid testing, but we're going to offer and strongly encourage as much as we can. Okay, so contact tracing, close contacts.
Got a question. Why can't you require that?
Our attorneys have advised us strongly against it.
Oh, I think the uh.
It's not FDA approved.
The federal government says we are able to, I'm pretty sure.
Uh, we're, we're, we're not, no, they have recommended that we do not require our staff to, in K twelve settings. Contact tracing, close contacts and quarantine. So the CDC um, says we should continue to collaborate with CUPHD. We are, are working very closely with them. Um, I've been in close contact with Julie Pride. Um, around what we're doing and how we're gonna be monitoring close contacts and doing our contact tracing. Um, we have a new COVID health liaison who we hired um, in June, early July. And she is going to kind of take over the monitoring of close contacts from the HR department, which has been. Um, a pretty hefty uh, task for them. Um, and she will work directly with our nursing staff to be that liaison for the district uh, directly with public health. So um, again, the CDC requirement is that non-vaccinated continue to quarantine. Um, when they're close contacts but vaccinated, and we'll talk about this in just a few minutes when we talk about some of the quarantine guidelines. Are not required to quarantine if they're asymptomatic. And as I already mentioned, they also do not have to test, but we are again, going to be encouraging people to do so. So the close contact rule, um, this is something that, um, you know, I wanna stress to our families. And, and I've been stressing this heavily with our administrators, is again, our goal is to have students back in person. Uh, it defeats the purpose of all of us coming back to school if we're always, if we're gonna have large groups of students in quarantine all the time. Um, so that is another reason why the universal masking recommendation is really important to us. Because of this actual special close contact rule for K twelve. So per CDC, the definition of a close contact, um, students who are within three to six feet of an infected individual. Are not treated as a close contact as long as, um, both individuals were engaged and consistent in correct mask wearing. So back to Laura's point about making sure the students are wearing their mask correctly. Um, and that other prevention measures and strategies were in place, um, like cohorting, um, physical distancing. So this applies to our teachers, staff, students and adults indoors, um, in K through twelve classroom settings. So in other words, only contacts within three feet or less uh, will be required to quarantine. As long as both the um, pers- the close contact and the person who um, may be infected were consistently masked. So this close contact rule really um, will allow us to keep more of our students um, in person. So the case that I mentioned last week, um, when we started our contact tracing. And we will continue to do our own contact tracing and again, we work with public health. Um, they are so busy and I anticipate they will continue to stay busy once school starts. That there are days or instances where we don't hear from them right away. Um, and we know that a student is positive or we know that a staff member is positive because they've reached out to us. So we right away at that point, um, start doing our own contact tracing. Um, so as soon as we heard from the staff member, um, that she'd tested positive or they tested positive. We right away went to the uh, students and the co-teachers and we didn't have to quarantine. Um, we only had one student that needed to quarantine, um, because of mask wearing. And um, all the other students that that teacher had worked with, they were able to stay in school. Because they were following this close contact rule. They were three to six feet away and always wearing a mask. So I think this will um, help us significantly, um, be able to keep our tea, our, our students and our staff in person. As much as we possibly can and do it in a safe way.
And, sorry, I.
Yeah.
I just kinda wanted to go back to testing and requiring testing, sure, staff. I guess it just seems, it, it kind of occurred to me that. You had mentioned, and I think other times it didn't mention, that often when there was a case among staff, it was because of outside of school activity.
Yep.
And then that being brought into school. So it would seem to me that it would be. Highly preventative to encourage or require testing to prevent.
We are encouraging it.
But like, I guess it just seems like. Unfortunately, Delta variant isn't looking great, right? So it almost seems like, as I'm sure many of us know, it's much easier to loosen restrictions later when it gets easier. Than to implement more restrictions as it gets worse. That's harder. So I'm, I'm just, I'm curious, I, I guess I would like to know more about some of, I guess, the decision to not require testing. When we know other like, large organizations are requiring that.
Sure. So um, just like we, we can't require someone to get vaccinated, we're not requiring them to get tested. Now our unvaccinated folks, um, we are asking them um, to test and we're encouraging it. And um, we have plans set in place for the people who will have to quarantine. Unfortunately, it won't be pleasant for them because they will be in and out of quarantine much more than our vaccinated people will. Um, but we are, we, we are to the point, are, we're taking the advice of our attorneys and we are not forcing people at this point to um, to mandate testing for them.
I will say once again, that the Department of Justice released a thing like a week ago that said, you're allowed to require testing in both public and private uh, employee situations.
Can I interject for a second?
That's wholly changed.
I'm just looking right now on ISB's website for FAQ that was released yesterday.
Yep.
That says the state of Illinois is not mandating vaccines and also that it's only encouraging testing and vaccines, but it cannot require it. And that's a state mandate. It's not up to the local districts, if I'm reading this correctly on the fly. So that's kind of probably what's driving our attorneys to give us this advice. And also, I mean, I know, I, I agree with you. I wish that it would be a universal, federal, statewide, district-wide, everything mandate. But if we follow the state mandate, which is what was laid out yesterday, then we're doing everything we can legally, but.
When you say, they say you, or they're not requiring it, but they, are they saying it is illegal to require it? I don't think you said they're saying it's illegal to require it, cause I think it is legal to require it.
It would only be illegal if the law had been passed. This is a recommendation, but by not following the recommendation. I'm assuming our attorneys would advise us that it would be subject to litigation if we to go against it.
I mean, none of us here are lawyers, but I, I think we can ask our lawyers to provide us a brief as to what the rationale is behind that recommendation. And I, I would love to read it myself personally.
And if ISB and IDPH and the CDC were recommending that, I'm sure we would um, have different guidance from all the attorneys and different groups. But that is, at this point, it is um, not something that they're recommending.
Not that it matters. The teacher that did test positive was vaccinated. She was vaccinated at our clinic. And I, I just wanted to say that, that I do think a lot of our staff members, although we don't have a hundred percent. Um, have received the vaccine and, and are fully vaccinated and it was just unfortunate that that occurred. Um, so that I just wanted to chime in with that, so somebody didn't think that a staff member was being irresponsible.
And we've shared that before. I know John has been cross-referencing the vaccination cards that are being uploaded with the people that we know. Uh, were vaccinated with us and we do have a pretty high percentage. It's above eighty percent. Um, but again, that's not everyone, so.
To me, this kinda reminds me of how it's required of students to be vaccinated, um, just for their regular physical vaccines. But yeah, we do have exemptions that doctors can sign off on if parents choose not to get their children vaccinated. You know, we recommend it, but it's not a requirement. There are exemptions, just like with this vaccine, I believe.
Yeah, and it's not FDA approved yet and that's another reason why our attorneys, and I mentioned that earlier. Um, because the vaccine's not FDA approved. Um, of course, we don't wanna mandate people do something that um, legally, they could then turn around and say. We made them do something that was not approved by the federal, uh, the FDA.
Exactly.
Yep. So uh, clarifying quarantine. I know I've been getting a lot of questions about quarantine. Uh, Nurse and I have talked about this a lot. Uh, one thing that we are also hoping that we will receive very soon, it was supposed to actually come out last week. Following the uh, CDC update, uh, was a new decision tree from the IDPH. I've shared those with you before. So a decision tree is where they basically tell you step by step. You know, if you're a close contact, then you have to do this. In, in this situation, you have to do that. So uh, we're expecting that IDPH is going to share an updated um, decision tree specifically for schools. Um, it would be nice if they did that very soon before school starts, uh, but right now, we're using. But right now, we are using the CDC recommendations for quarantines. And ISBE has basically said that they want us to follow these as well. So I just wanted to spend a little time clarifying what quarantine will look like. So quarantines for unvaccinated individuals will remain disruptive. So as we've discussed, right, we know we have a few staff members and our younger students who are not vaccinated. But again, if we are following our universal masking procedures and our physical distancing and making sure that we're keeping students at least three feet apart, hopefully we'll be able to mitigate the number of quarantines that we need, but we know that we will have some. So individuals will continue to be close contacts in the following scenarios. So unmasked, unvaccinated students and adults within six feet of an infected person for 15 cumulative minutes over 24 hours. That is the basic definition of a close contact. Masked, unvaccinated students within three feet of an infected person for 15 cumulative minutes over 24 hours. So that is the three feet or less that I was talking to you about. And our public health department is going, they've already met with all of our superintendent group. And they have been very clear with us that if we are not universal masking, the social distancing requirement is going to be really, really looked at as they think about who is going to be quarantined and who isn't. So for districts that are going under the three feet, there will be quite a few students and staff members that will be in quarantine. That is not going to be our practice, but I just wanted to make sure that the quarantine requirements were clear for everyone. So CUPHD will continue to make final determinations on who is to be quarantined for how long and whether modified quarantine options are available. We don't make quarantine decisions. What we do at our, whoops, sorry. What we do at our level is once we find out that someone's positive, we have an exclusion process that we've been following all year, right, all last year. So we have a student exclusion letter that we send home with the student. It is very clear when we found out that student was positive. And then we have a kind of an open date that we leave there. When we find out from public health, when they can return, then we fill that out and we share it with the family. So we don't make those determinations. People are put into, I just want to make sure that's really clear. People are put into quarantine by public health. We just, we will send staff members and students home when we find out. And then at that point, public health lets us know how long their quarantine will be based on the backwards mapping that they do related to the close contact. So the quarantine options are 14 calendar days, 10 calendar days with no symptoms. And students and staff can return with masking and distancing. So if someone is a close contact or they are positive and they stay in quarantine for 10 days, have no symptoms, they can come back to school as long as they mask and stay at least three to six feet apart. Seven calendar days asymptomatic and negative PCR testing. The PCR testing is shield at day six. So if someone remains asymptomatic, they've been in quarantine for seven days, they go get a negative shield test on day six and they never develop any symptoms. They can return to school with masking and distancing. A new protocol that we just, they've been talking about it all summer, but it was just officially released last week with the 727 announcement is the test to stay protocol where as long as a student with no symptoms or they are a close contact, they do not have to be removed from school if they get a negative test on day one, day three, day five, and day seven. That only applies if we are following the physical distancing rules. The exposure did not occur at home and the students wore masks. So that is going to be a little harder for us to monitor at the school level. It's going to require a lot of testing on our part, but that's why we have hired additional nurses. That's why we extended our nurses' hours and made them full day nurses is because of these kind of situations where we want our students in school, but we want them in school safely. So we will be doing a lot of testing and not just to find those people who might be positive, but also to make sure that we're following the close contact rules. Questions about that? Okay. So symptom screening, this has been a big topic as well. It's been something we've been doing. All, we kept our symptom screening systems in place through the summer with the lanyards. The lanyards were really, really hard to monitor. We were giving the same students lanyards every day, over and over. So what our attorneys and what a lot of districts are doing is we are no longer required to do the daily temperature checks. I mean, those that went away months ago, but we continue to do it much longer than we probably needed to. But we just felt like it kind of was a nice, you know, peace, peace of mind thing, I think, for our staff. So we continue to do it a lot longer than we probably, we had to, but we did it anyway. The guidance now says that temperature checks at the doors, especially for younger students, aren't needed because our younger students are typically asymptomatic anyway. So what we've decided to do, and we've already been kind of piloting this this summer with some of our summer programs, is instead of using the back and forth lanyard cards, which did get to be very cumbersome for the building levels to keep up with that and for families to keep up with them, we are going to have families still do their self-screening at home. And we're going to, we have already created a one-time sign-off that our families will sign. They will indicate that they are doing a symptom check every day at home. If we find that a family is, has sent their student to school sick or they're not following, and our symptom screening form will attach it and put it online as well. It is very specific about, it mentions if we reach out to you and say you're a close contact, we expect our families to cooperate with public health. So if public health puts a family in quarantine, we expect them to stay in quarantine and not send their student to school. So if we find that those kinds of situations are happening, then we of course will have those families individually do daily screening and we will have those students wear a lanyard every day. But instead of having, you know, 4,300 students going back and forth with these little cards and lanyards every day, there's a lot of touching involved with those. We thought the one-time sign-off, one, will help our families a little bit and two, help our student, our schools kind of keep up with that. And for students and families who break the rules, then they will have stricter restrictions on them in terms of what the daily symptom screening will look like. We'll continue to limit non-essential visitors during the school day. That does not apply to our student teachers. We want to continue to honor the relationships we have with the university and places like Illinois State for our new pre-service teachers. Most of them are being vaccinated and have to do regular screening at their schools. They will also be encouraged to screen and test with us. So I've been talking to Tom Howley about mentors. So he and I have had some email exchanges. He had a meeting today with his counterpart in Unit Four. And so they're making some decisions as we speak and this week about what the CU one-to-one mentor program will look like. And that's, I can't really share tonight what that's going to be. I know they were talking about any mentors that wanted to come back in person, that we would allow it. And we of course would, anybody who comes in our buildings will have to follow whatever our protocols are. They'll have to mask. If they are vaccinated, they can upload their vaccination cards. So we have that information for our close contact. So hopefully I'll be able to share our next meeting, what we're actually doing with our volunteers or more specifically our mentors. And that is an additional prevention measure. Again, at the bottom, I have said there, and we are going to continue to say it as much as we possibly can. And we want all of our building administrators and our teachers to communicate at the school level, if you're sick, stay home. And that doesn't mean you might be sick with COVID or if you have any kind of symptoms, we want people to stay home and get tested. We're continuing to work with families. I know the family who shared a public comment tonight, Todd's been working with that family specifically. So we are continuing to work with families that are qualifying for homebound. We have some families that have made a decision to go the homeschool route. So Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Norton are working directly with those families. We also have some families who have made a decision to do partial enrollment, which is something we've allowed for a very long time. And it is, it's an approved ISBE and school code allowance. So I think at this point, we feel like all the families that have reached out to us were at least able to work with them one-on-one. What will quarantine and remotes look like for the students who have to be quarantined because they're not able to, they're not able to have a vaccine at this point? So we've been talking with our UEA about that and our administrators. So at the elementary level, we have already been following the concurrent synchronous model all year. Basically, our elementary teachers have learned how to kind of, in a very hybrid way, they have students who are in person and also students in Zoom. What the elementary cohort group has decided to do is we are not expecting like a kindergartner or a third grader to zoom in for five hours. So what we're going to do is offer a Zoom link for a student that might be in quarantine. They can zoom in for the lip block. They can zoom in for math. We'll utilize our subs and our teaching assistants as much as possible when we have staff members who have to quarantine. And again, that would mostly just be our unvaccinated staff members. And as I've shared, our rate of vaccination is pretty high. So we're not anticipating that a lot of our certified staff members will be in quarantine often, but there will be times when they will have to. Or question call?
Just real quick. So we are reading this is that the state is allowing us to have some sort of remote instruction for students who happen to be in quarantine, but they're not allowing us to do it in general.
Right. So this is back to this past slide. If they are under quarantine due to a positive case or a close contact and they're not eligible for the vaccine. So are basically our elementary students. And that is so there's not a disruption in their learning. So if they, yep. So if they, instead of having to miss 14 days of school or 10 days of school, they're able to still like zoom in to get, to join the lip block or they're able to zoom in for math class just so they're able to stay connected to what's happening during those 10 days while they're in quarantine. At the middle school, high school level, we're going to follow and early childhood. We don't want to encourage additional screen time for our younger students. So we're going to follow more of an asynchronous model. At the middle school, high school level, Google Classroom is something that everyone utilizes. So they will put students' assignments and packets in the Google Classroom, share video recordings of lectures to make sure that the students, especially the high school students, are not missing out if they have to go into a 10-day quarantine and miss two weeks of school. That is it. Questions? I know you've been kind of asking your questions as we go along. Do you have others?
I was curious. I think I asked earlier about, like, earlier, meaning several months ago, about the HVAC systems. And I think I had asked at some point about how that would be, what it was, you know, what kind of reporting or what would be available. And I believe Randy, you had said there was, there would be more information or you had some information, but that might be helpful for families to know what was updated and what the system's, what they're doing or how they work and.
I'm working on a little piece right now to let everybody know what we've put into the buildings. We put in the iWave system in every event that we have. And we've also included a bunch of air purifiers in buildings that don't have windows or additional airflow.
And Randy, if you want to get more in our bigger plan, we can include a little bit more about the iWave as like a blurb about it in the, yep.
That's the plan. Include iWaves and then their RZ room machines.
Yes.
Filters. Filters are, our, the current system we have in all the buildings won't allow us to use the, like the MERV 13 air filters. So we're just going to try to switch out the filters more often. And like I said, we included all iWaves in all of the vents that we have.
For the decreased layering of the onion, when you're talking about removing measures as things improve, is there any current plan set forth as to which layers are going first and what metrics would cause those layers to be removed?
No, we are not until we kind of reach our checkpoint in mid-September. I think most districts are, the first thing that they're going to look at is masking and going more of a mask optional. Universal masking has not been as, as big of a issue in our buildings as it may be in some communities that are very anti-masked. Masking and people really pushing back against wearing masks. Our staff are used to wearing masks, so that isn't something that we, we have not decided like which part of that. I think the masks will be the biggest things that people want to talk about if we get to that point.
Well, which layers can you actually remove? So there's masking and distancing. But I doubt you're going to change, remove the HVAC system, you know, you're not doing that.
Masking and distancing would be the two big ones that I think, like, are we going to ever be able to be able to put more students in our lunchroom where we don't have to continue to have portables or continue to have students eating kind of all over the school, which causes other, you know, domino effects in terms of supervision issues and possibly discipline issues and things like that. So I think we'll look at how, one, how our mitigations are holding in terms of the contact tracing, the testing, the screening. If we are able to keep our outbreaks, I mean, we've not had any. So if we're able to continue to do that and we are happily moving along and keeping, keeping students in school, we don't remove any layers. But we have said that we will use that mid-September point as a checkpoint to just come back and look at how our community looks and how things are going for us before we do anything. Brenda, you were going to say something like it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I really commend you and your team because it seems like throughout this whole thing, we have been getting information. It either comes out very, very rapidly or there's nothing for a while. So I, I really just want to commend you and your team because I think you have done a great job in being very transparent, letting our community know exactly where our schools stand. And I know that's got to be very difficult with the mass amount of information that we've been getting. So I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. It was hard. I mean, we had meetings earlier set up, like even we had an earlier meeting in July to meet with our union to start talking, planning and talking. And we had no guidance to really, you know, we couldn't really sit down and have those conversations because we really had nothing to talk about. So you're right, it is hard when we get things three weeks before school starts and we have to scramble and make decisions. Luckily for us, we were planning to recommend universal masking anyway. So it didn't cause us to have to pivot significantly like some districts are doing right now, who would already put out guidance that they were going to go mask optional. That wasn't something that we really ever considered. who would already put out guidance that they were gonna go mask optional. That wasn't something that we were really ever considering, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that um you've talked to like the different teachers, you know, everyone involved in the school, even down to, you know, uh lunchroom people, janitors. All of us have to work together to do this thing. And I I really do. I think you guys have done a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
I I also want to commend the the fact that you said it pretty early on that in terms of policy changes, we'd be judicious and slow in in making them. So I mean, that would give us time uh to discuss them here as as well before we we do anything with regards to mask mandates or with regards to distancing in buildings. I think every other week, we 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 have an opportunity to talk about it before before things change in buildings.
Sure. And one thing I forgot to mention that I was in my notes and I must have skipped it is we are not bringing forward a change in our masking policy. Um if we were going to be talking about at any point uh looking at going mask optional, our board policy that we approved last year says that we will universally mask and everyone will wear masks. So that because that is the policy that we approved and adopted and we've been following, because we're starting the year wearing masks, I'm not bringing back a um masking policy change for you. If uh we get to that point months down the road, or if the um, you know, the our situation changes in a much more positive direction in the months to come, I of course would work with our attorneys to um bring back a um update to the masking policy. But because we, our policy currently says everyone will mask, and that's how we're starting the year. So we, I did not bring that to you tonight.
Any further board questions? Right. Thank you.
So, sorry. I know the resolution, I just gave it to you today. I want our attorney who usually works with these uh kinds of um documents and agreements has been on vacation. So um she and I just worked on this today. So today is the first time that you're seeing it. Um so we definitely can um put it on for the next meeting to have you um approve this. This is basically um the same resolution we had last year, which like Brenda said, as as things have shifted and changed and um, you know, there will be times during the year where things may shift in a in another direction quickly. Um we may not have a meeting set up, so I will of course keep you updated via email. And um we are going to try have uh to have more one-on-ones or two-on-twos um to discuss things as they come up. But this bit resolution basically um allows the superintendent and the administrative team, if we have to make um quick decisions about uh quarantine in classrooms or a whole school or closing a district facility. Um and they're all listed in here um that we, I don't have to wait for the next board meeting to do that, to discuss it. That if there's something that is crisis-related or um something that CE PhD basically says this is what I need you to do, um I'm gonna do what Julie Pryor tells me to do, and I'll notify you guys and say this is what CE PhD has recommended. Um so that's basically what this resolution um gives me the authority to be able to do that, to want to keep you informed and keep our public informed. But um sometimes we have to make decisions pretty quickly um as things change. So so we will put this on as an action item next time, since you guys have seen it today for the first time.
Once again, are there any questions? Right. Thank you. Right, uh study topic nine point two, uh sub district seven, Board of Education member vacancy. So uh what we're doing uh to fulfill this this uh to fill this vacancy is to follow our existing board policy document, which is what we did uh six years ago when um Lynn German uh resigned from the board and to move to California. And we had, I think, four applicants, and we went through basically the same process. Um so what we're doing now is we have up on on our website and available at our uh new uh central office uh our forms for individuals uh to fill out to make a statement of interest. I guess I could read the whole thing. I guess read this for the public. So the uh the Urbana School District Board of Education is accepting applications to fill the vacancy, resulting from resignation of uh member John Dimmitt in Sub-District Seven. The appointment will be from September seventh, twenty twenty-one until April twenty twenty-three. Uh at a minimum, the applicants need to be a US citizen, be eighteen years of age, be a resident of Illinois and the district for at least one year immediately preceding the appointment. Be a resident of Sub-District Seven, be a registered voter, not be a child sex offender, not hold another incompatible public office, not have a prohibited interest in any contact with the district, not hold certain types of prohibited state and federal employment. So the uh applicants should show familiarity with with boards' policies regarding general duties and responsibilities of a school board and school board member, including fiduciary responsibilities, conflicts of interest, ethics and gift ban. Uh the policies are all available on the website. Uh we're collecting a statement of interest, uh sorry, statement of interest forms may be picked up at eleven oh one East University Avenue, Suite B in Urbana, uh beginning yesterday. A completed statement of interest, current resume, and a letter that includes your reasons for wanting to serve on the Urbana School District one sixteen Board of Education must be turned in by four PM on Friday, August thirteenth to eleven oh one East University. All material should be placed in a sealed envelope. Uh attention to the school board president, Paul Polowski. Uh virtual public forum moderated by the League of Women Voters will be held via Zoom on August twenty-fourth at six PM. And interviews will be conducted during a special meeting of the Board of Education on Tuesday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Time to be announced. Uh the selected candidate will be seated at the September seventh Board of Education meeting. This is essentially the same pol- uh process we followed six years ago. And that worked out pretty well. Uh, there any questions or or comments? Okay, great. Uh moving to nine point three, uh we ended last, our last meeting uh with a discussion of things we would like to accomplish as a board and and potentially study topics we would like uh presented before the board uh during this upcoming academic year. And I have that list. I've lost it. So we have uh, yeah, they're they're broken down into equity-related uh issues uh and work, talk about different board committees, curriculum-related work and oh, and some, and then more work involving redistricts, redistricting, equity training and and board policy reviews. There's a bunch, a bunch of things here that we talked about uh last year. Is there, are there any uh? One, I was wondering if if the board had any additional things to add to this? Or uh in particular, items in this long list of work that uh they would like to prioritize before others? Uh there's things we absolutely have to do very soon. Um the the board election boundaries need to be done fairly shortly so that we can meet state requirements for our future election. But um, you know, want to hear what you all think.
And this basically represents everything that you, we didn't take anything away. So this is basically, I may have reframed it and reworded it a little bit, and then um I put them in groupings, kind of topic areas uh just to make it a little bit easier. But these were all the things that were shared at our uh June meeting we'll be discussing.
Well, I got a couple. So uh one thing that uh had come up this summer, I had uh emailed uh President Polowski and Dr. Eric Tame about is potentially modifying board policy seven forty, which is the remote education option. Because right now, it only says you're able to do it for uh juniors and seniors in high school that are otherwise going to graduate for some reason, like, you know, they have to be full-time employed for their family or something, or they're moving out of state on the finisher, whatever the reason is. So uh, you know, for uh this COVID pandemic may easily be rolling for another two years or so realistically before it's gone. And who's to say there's not gonna be some other bat virus or something that comes around in five years? So I think having a option where we can do a remote option, if that is what we choose to do for circumstances that are, you know, whenever there's a contract of some kind, there's always these supernatural, you know, God powers or, you know, events that allow you to do certain things. I can't remember the term for that, but something like along those lines, act of God. That's what it is. Uh act of God type event that uh forces you to need to do something, you know, so uh having a discussion about that uh to see, you know, I'm not saying to try to necessarily push it through in the next three weeks, but I'm saying it have it in the the policy manual. So in the future, you know, maybe next spring or next summer or fall, we need to use it, or ten years from now, you know, we were not uh stuck with our hands tied behind our back.
No, I think that'd be great.
Well, and to piggyback to piggyback what you just said, Robbie, um I know you had mentioned it, Brenda, I don't remember when, past meeting about policy uh board policy, and I'm sorry to even suggest it at the risk of this is a very full plate, and I know we've got a lot of stuff, but I I for one think it would be a good idea to have the exercise of updating our policy manual, just because, I mean, based on you had said, I can't, I think.
It's actually on here, under the board word, review board policies. When you do do the review uh the board policies, I was actually on that committee. And it is very long and tedious, but it is very, very worthwhile because there could be things that are outdated. There could be, you know, we get updates all the time for our board policy handbook. And it's very, very thick, if you actually had a physical copy of it, you know. But um with all the changes and stuff, I think that is a very important aspect of it. Um, one of the things too is when we're going through the board policies, I think we need to also be aware of uh all of the changes that come down from the state to adjust, you know, kind of like what Robbie was saying about the remote learning. I think a plan would be good to have in place, but we couldn't really implement it like right then because that would require having a lot more people on on staff, I think, to be able to do that. And hopefully, our technology would be upgraded enough, which is one of the big things that I know John's been working on um to get that upgrade for everyone. But it it would really entail a lot. So, but I think it it would be good, you know, to have something like that.
Well, so you you were on the board, and the the reason why I mentioned is that there was a, an ISB webinar last month that it was a policy primer that said, if you haven't reviewed your policy manual in five years, it's time. And I thought, huh, well, it's been six years since I've been on here, and you said you did it with, I think, Pope Comson, which was, I don't know how many. But that doesn't mean that you're making recommendations. It just means you have people to, right? And you're crossing out stuff that looks outdated, and then you would take it to the administration and the board to ask for recommendations on how to update it, which could then like proceed into the following year, right?
There uh someone comes out from them, you would pay them, they would go over everything with you um and review all the policies with you. And if it's something is outdated or whatever, then they would be the one to tell you, we don't need this.
Well, and I mean, like Robbie said, with an act of God, as we've just suffered and are suffering.
Right.
It's a perfect time, but I mean, I.
Yeah. And so our board attorney and I have talked about this. So when I first came two years ago, there were multiple times where I went to our board policies looking for an exhibit or an artifact. Um and I had several conversations with Susan, and she said it's always been our district's policy that we've not adopted those. Um and I think Carol and I have found several instances where we really wished we had adopted the artifact. And so um the conversation that I had with Susan pre-pandemic, what, you know, what we talked about doing, I was literally going through the board policy section by section.
Oh, wow.
And um and that is basically, that's basically what Brenda's talking about. Have to go by, uh go through section by section and
Word for word.
Look at the policies that are out of date. I would love to do that exercise in terms of looking at the policies where we, again, for many, many years have never adopted the artifacts, which in a lot of cases, the artifacts are actually helpful. And so, you know, going through those, and if there were artifacts or exhibits that we felt like we should adopt, then that would be a time that we could do that, too.
So would that be something that we would organize, just like any other committee, like a facilities committee or whatever? We'd have two board members to be, do the the groundwork and.
We can do that. There's also, that group could bring forward the the vital things to the public meeting and for the seven of us and under the policy review section of the agenda, right?
Kind of maybe how we do press, like right now, when we have a press update, I bring like the full press packet, and we talk through um the things that are most impactful to our district. But I think if a committee were going through section by section, then that would be when we would do that is during the policy review segment, so.
Maybe this is obvious, but I think with the new hire of um Dr. Brandon Chappie to the team, he should be part of the equity work, so making sure that whatever we're doing with our task force and bringing him on board is all included. You know, this was written before that.
Yes.
But making sure that's part of the equity work.
So another thing I've got is uh, you know, there's uh, I mean, as well know, there's been a lot more shootings going on, shootings where multiple magazines are being unloaded into a person's house or a parking lot or wherever. And uh along those lines, uh just, you know, what is the both trauma-informed uh counseling ability whatever we thought we needed two years ago, probably double that, I would think, you know, something higher.
Sure.
So both that, as well as potentially some kind of training or awareness for teachers who will be what you could call, quote-unquote, the first responders to identify trouble. You know, that they, oh, like, it doesn't seem quite right, or I noticed these signs, you know, what are the signs they should be looking for? To then bring them in and refer them to the counselor or to do whatever, you know, so. I know that's a a board of policy issue, but uh it's something that the schools should be doing for the district.
So we had a uh violence uh response circle, kind of restorative community event at the middle school in May. Um where I was just having this conversation with Dr. Wee Mel again yesterday, um hoping to get another one of those, especially after this recent week of uh back and forth violence in the community involving several young people who have siblings who are going to be entering our school buildings in the next two weeks. So we're very concerned um not only by the number of guns in our community, but the fact that some of those guns might be walking into our buildings. So uh we're gonna be meeting with the admin secondary people next week. Um and we're gonna start updating their crisis plans um and not waiting for our district committee. Uh we have a district crisis committee, but this is too important right now. Um so we're going to pull the middle school and high school teams back together, um the administrators mostly, and start looking at what our uh crisis plan procedures are. Um but also, we want to do the healing piece for our community. Um, all of these incidents seem kind of far removed, but you'd be surprised how much they into our schools through all kinds of ways, through staff members who work for us, parents who are connected. Um, we're we're really concerned about retaliation, and uh we want to make sure that we're gonna be prepared um for the first day of school, all eyes, as well as all the things that you're talking about. Um being more trauma-informed. We have threat assessment practices. Our district team, is that this Friday, Todd, or is that next Friday, the threat assessments training is this Friday? So we already have threat assessment teams at every school. Um and there, we have kind of a train-the-trainer model. So they're all being trained um again this Friday, and then they will then go back to their schools and have some of those conversations. Um we are very uh thankful that we have so many support staff, other districts. We have our clinical professionals, we have additional social workers we've hired. So we have a lot of support services um where we can wrap around our families, our students uh who are touched by this uh community violence as it's happening. So I think that's, yeah, that is a great suggestion.
Dr. Irvine Tane, I had a question. Um would the SROs be involved in that as far?
Would the SROs be involved in that as far as the training? You know, because I know they're very highly trained and many of them have bonds with a lot of the staff members would go to them, just as well as the students and everything. And I was just hoping they would be in on this.
Part of the threat assessment teams.
And the circles and everything. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I know Michelle Robinson does lots of circles and she's involved in those at the middle school level. They just happen more regularly at the middle school level than they do at the high school level, but they both are involved in the threat assessment process. So yes.
If I'm going to single something out here, I would really like to us to have a board retreat once our new member is seated. I think it'd be really helpful for us to have a refresher on, you know, board standards and practices as, as well as to have, you know, overview of our, our policy documents. And it's a good opportunity, I think, for us to you know, talk further about, about our goals, both for this year and for further down, down the road. As well to work with ISB on that, but and then try to schedule a time for that. And hopefully sooner rather than later as well.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Talk to the administrator. We added a.
Oh, right. Sorry. Yeah.
No, that's okay. Just.
At the very end, administrative recommendations for future topics for study sessions would be our curriculum initiatives in terms of MAP, panorama, letters, math adoption.
And we had a couple of additional ones. I don't know if Kim wants to add anything, but that this is an older copy of this, we updated it today. But we also are going to be investing in a data dashboard, which is something we have wanted for years and years. We've been kind of creating our own data dashboard, but now that we have Mr. Bootsmer, he is kind of leading the charge to get us a more formal data dashboard that we can use in a much, in a, and to drill down in a much more significant way. And then Kim, I don't know if you want to speak to the college and career ready. That was another one that we thought would be a good study topic for the board.
Tonya, yeah.
We also have ed pathways that branches off into several different options. There's a lot of work being done with the regional office, with Parkland and also with some regional groups, which, and we've had curricular work that's been done over the summer with advancing course options, offering dual credit as we create educational pathway courses that are growing educators within our district. We even had a couple of students that participated in a camp over the summer at Eastern for aspiring educators. And so they were, they spent three weeks there. And so a lot of work that's being conducted in that area and we're really excited about that. And we also recognize this isn't something that is just at the high school. Mrs. Justali has been working with individuals across the district at all levels because, you know, we're all preparing our students to be college and career ready. And this doesn't just start at the high school level. So that's a little bit, and I think you mentioned the letters as well. So then at the very beginning, so yeah, a lot of exciting things in the work. And then the SIP plans as well as we're aligned with our district goals is expect quarterly updates on that. We want to be transparent what's happening in all of our buildings and the progress that we're making on our school and district goals.
So our thought is not to bombargue with all these things at once. As we are introducing these new curriculum initiatives to staff, then, and they are becoming more integrated into the everyday practices that then will then bring those before the board around the same time. I think MAP will probably, MAP and panorama will probably be the first two big ones that we will bring forward as soon as we can to discuss.
Right. Anything else? All right. 9.4 is a discussion on our board committees for this upcoming year. So we just did a, you were given in your packet a list of existing, existing committees. So I guess please read them over and, and let me know what you're interested in, in working on. And so we can get committee assignments out for, for individuals. There's, there's no contract negotiation this year, so we, we, we don't have to worry about that.
No, I got a question about those committees.
Oh, sure.
So I was talking to my wife earlier today because, you know, so we've had a child in the district for six years, going on seven now. And I was like, have you ever heard of a call for action to join a committee for the school district? And she said, no. And the only one I could think of was the diversity committee because an email went out on it, you know, like in December. So there are parents involved in these committees and I'm not sure how they're chosen, but you really need to publicize that they're out there. And hopefully you can draw in a new pool or a larger pool of people that are interested, enthusiastic about them. So I just wanted to recommend that.
So I think the one that is most heavily parents is the district parent teacher advisory committee. And the way that we, all of our buildings have community roundtable groups and they used to be called PACs, parent advisory councils. Now we kind of call them community roundtables. So they're groups that are already involved through that, as well as our PTA groups. So our administrators kind of put that out to the building and we try to have a representative group from the building on that committee and make sure that all levels are represented. So I don't choose the parents that are on those groups. I ask our administrators to go to their roundtable groups, their parent advisory groups and solicit volunteers. I offer the invitation and say, this is the number of times you're going to meet. And sometimes, as what happened with the equity task force, we have a lot of parents who step up and say, yes, they want to do that. But sometimes life and busy schedules get in the way. And we don't have as many people who might participate. And I, our community advisory group that was meeting my first year was fantastic. I mean, we had a very representative group and we had parents who came to every single meeting and they were really involved in the discussions. So that'll be the process again, is I'll go out to our administrators and ask them to, at every level and every building, to nominate parents that are involved and participating in activities at their schools to be part of that. Instead of just like a wide sweeping, like application process or anything like that. So they know much better than I do, like who is, who was in the buildings and who's there and. Sure. You want me to walk? Okay. So at the, the very beginning, I, we have not done the UEA BOE roundtable discussions in quite some time. That is LOU5. So I've reached out to the UEA and my first year, because it was a negotiation year, we did the luncheons. And we went to every school, we had the BOE lunch, we met with all the teachers. That kind of took the place of the roundtable since we, we went to every single building. UEA is also interested in bringing the roundtable back this year. So I'm going to, where we have a meeting with them again tomorrow. So at that meeting, we're going to choose three times this year that we're going to meet. Instead of the contract language says three to four meetings. We really want to get our first quarter under our belt and get students back in the buildings. And then we'll have three meetings, one per quarter. So what the roundtable basically involves is the whole board. So we don't really get, we don't have to choose people. Our UEA brings forward, you know, seven to eight people. And we have the entire board and we basically would meet in a room like this and have open and honest discussions about how the, how the district's aligned and what are some concerns or what are some topic areas that we want to talk about. So that's UEA BOE roundtable discussions. Have you, I know in my previous life, I don't remember participating in those very much. Do you remember the last time we had?
I remember.
Has it been a long time?
It's been a long time.
It was at the high school and yeah, it, it has been quite a while.
Because UEA could not remember the last time we did it either. And so I basically, it's time for us to do it. And we have a very collaborative UEA group who are invested and, and, you know, we have a good working relationship with them. So I think that this is a good time to kind of reinvigorate the roundtable discussions. As Paul mentioned, we don't have contract negotiations this year, but that will be coming. And that is something John always participated in this year. Paul and Ann did that, well, not this year, but the last time we negotiated. So it is a huge time commitment. So I think that's just something to think about before you volunteer for, for that. Lots of long nights.
But we're not limited to, to two board members with those either. That's, that's exempted part of the OMA. So we can have as many board members who want to participate in that as, as.
Absolutely. Yep. Thanks for adding that. We've, I've already kind of talked about the parent advisory committee that is coupled with the behavior interventions committee, which is part of our policy. And then we have quite a few special committees. I know I talked to Paul about hopefully, especially for our campus land use, property and facilities committee. That has definitely been a love of John's. In his letter, he did express that as a community person, he'd like to be able to continue to be part of that. We do need some consistency there. So I don't know if Paul is willing to continue with that.
I mean, John has facilitated donations of property to the district in the past and, and has feelers out for even more. So I think it'd be pretty foolish for us to walk away from, from that.
Or from his invitation to continue to include him. Carol and I have talked about the school wellness committee. So that did not meet last year, but it is something that is on her to-do list this, this year. So if you're interested, I think you were Brenda, school wellness, they would work closely with Carol and Arbor, our food service provider and doing things like looking at menus, talking about the school lunch program. I know we've been doing a lot of that kind of informally with the food to, food to, what is it called? Farm School, thank you, group. But I mean, that doesn't actually involve looking at our wellness policy, but that is something that Carol would lead. Strategic planning will be something that hopefully now that we have a diversity, director of diversity, equity, inclusion, we can kind of hold some of that work in together and start looking forward to a strategic plan. The Chris, Crisis School Safety Committee, so that is a district-wide committee. And it does involve administrators. We have people, our, our fire department, our fire marshal, our police. We have a couple of police officers who work with us on intruder-related threats and our procedures for that. The last, when that committee last met, we were planning an in-person reunification. So that would be something we want to go back and revisit. The district technology committee is something that should have been meeting regularly. But now that John is here, he is kind of breathing a little life into that as well. And they have been meeting via Zoom. So that will be a committee that will continue. They've already set a lot of goals and have already created some tasks for the coming year. Our new director of marketing and communications, Catherine, as you know, is just kind of just started. So we want to give her a little chance to catch her breath before we jump right in and have her take over a committee. But so that'll be a committee that we will put on our second semester calendar. For anybody who's interested in that, bless you. Program council is the curriculum committee that meets three times a year. It is an after-school committee. They meet at four, three forty-five, four o'clock, which I know is hard for some of you. So this, that is a committee that does involve all the teachers and all the administrators. So it is something that if you're not available during the day or afternoon, that would be a harder one for you to participate in. And that was Peggy's love. Peggy's been our program council representative by herself, some years, Benita, I think joined her. But she's been doing it by herself for quite a while and it was something that she really enjoyed. And then the equity task force, I did share with Paul, I know that is something that is near and dear to everyone here. But because we're kind of in the middle of the work, you know, I know Tori and Paul have been there. I don't know what Tori's schedule is, but I think it would be nice for the committee if Tori and Paul were able to continue since we are kind of midway through and we have some things that we've started.
More than, more than midway through.
We're more than we may through, but it would be really hard to kind of start over. And Tori and Paul have been really invested in that work and been at every meeting. So at the back page are more of our ad hoc committees that are just as needed. So we don't need a district calendar committee every single year because usually when we approve a, a calendar, we approve multi-year calendars at one time. That is also, Robbie, a committee that has parents represented, either parents who have expressed interest or parents that are members of the PTA have typically been on calendar committee. Angie heads up the health insurance committee, which that meets every spring. But there are more meetings for health insurance when we're negotiating. So when we're in a negotiation year, which this year we're not, the health insurance committee is tapped to participate a little more heavily than normal. Todd leads our school-based health center advisory board. Linda, I think you've done that too. And they meet quarterly and just talk about goals and the vision for the health center. The naming committee only is needed as per board policy for 150 as we have items or the need to name something. So we have some very specific facility naming standards that we've set. So if and when that were to happen, we would pull together a committee for that. That isn't something we do all the time. So we'd come to you and say, we've had a request for a facility or a gym or a room or a library or something to be named. So we would pull that committee together as needed. We have a supervision teacher evaluation committee, which is our group that meets with the, we call it PARA. It's our evaluation plan. And there are some really specific guidelines that we're required to leave with our teachers and administrators about. And we have two board members who have always been part of those conversations. And same thing for ESP. And last but not least, our ISB delegate, which you guys have already designated Brenda or Brenda volunteered to do that.
She did a great job.
Yes, she does.
Thank you.
So lots of opportunities to serve, so.
Please let me know what you're interested in, what you're, what you're definitely not interested in as well.
We, do we need to have answers to you now? Or I mean, are we going to firm them up once we see the new board member? Or just how, what's the timeline for deciding this?
Until, well, I mean, you guys get first dibs because you're here, but I, I want to get it firmed up by the end of September.
Okay.
Because we could actually go through this a little bit more in-depth on our own and stuff. If there is something that's really striking somebody's interest, you know?
And if you have more questions, like, you know, like I mentioned, program council is something that happens at four o'clock. If you'd like to know, I, I mean, I didn't put those details in here, but if you'd like to know what does quarterly mean? Is that at six o'clock at night? Is that a seven o'clock meeting? Is that a, like most of John's meetings, I didn't mention this, but they tend to happen around three thirty, three forty-five. Anything that involves our teachers, except for the district parent advisory committee, meets immediately after school. Because we, we don't send the teachers home and then ask them to come back for meetings. So we typically have those meetings right at the end of the school day. So if you have questions like that, you know, feel free to reach out to me.
Having some of these meetings be at least hybrid has helped me participate.
Yes.
I could just.
And that's something I think is going to be a, a holdover from COVID that won't go away. It's will always, I think this year we're going to, for most of our settings, I think Todd has talked about. I think Todd has talked about continuing to offer a Zoom option for some of his special parent advisory meetings. I know Dionne has had great uh, parents input and participation at her um, family-focused meetings and her parent academies via Zoom. So I think that's something that we'll just always offer. Um, because I think we've reached a lot more people in the last year by, like you said, having these opportunities of hybrids and.
Right. Any, any further comments or questions? Great. Uh, moving on to action items. We only have one actual item left on our agenda. And that's the list of personal items, which typical for the beginning of the year is, is a little longer. Angie, is there something in particular that you want to call out on that, on the, on the? No, okay, great. Um, is there, is there a motion?
A second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, this needs to be a roll call.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes. Eleven point O is calls for future special executive meetings. And uh, we will have the interview meeting for uh, potential uh, for candidates on Tuesday, August thirty-first at six PM. Superintendent's report?
USD, I, in our high school for eight years. Uh, my student is, my kid is an art kid and um, I think as a parent, I know Ann too. Um, you know, we wrote letters of recommendation for her and she deserves this. And I emailed her and said, I hope you are enjoying this because you deserve it. Um, and she deserves all the praise. She's amazing. We have a lot of students who are in art who would not be continuing um, to uh, embrace that part of who they are if she was not such a great cheerleader and motivator for them. So we're really proud of Jill. Registration, um, we had registration last week. Um, online registration just ended. Uh, we had a great socially, physically distanced, uh, very safe in-person event. Um, we are very happy with the numbers of students, um, and family, new students who came through in person. Um, we had technology here for our people who have been um, having difficulty with the online registration process. Uh, so it was a really great two days um, for our families and we were happy to be able to still offer that in person. So just right now to give you an update, um, between students that are registered or pending um, the registration process. Uh, when I checked the numbers earlier today, we were almost at forty-three hundred. Students have either registered, started registration, are waiting to be approved at the building level, or are new families. So um, our numbers, you know, had dipped a little bit last year. We lost some families because we weren't in person. It was very encouraging to see a lot of those families come back. Um, and they're coming back to us now that we're going to be in person this year. So we're really encouraged by our registration. Oh, I also want to say thanks to all of our staff. Who gave up two days of their summer to be here with us too. Uh, UMS sixth grade transition has been going. Um, our incoming sixth graders are in sessions this week. Next week, we have our um, ninth grade transition week, so not ninth grade, high school transition week. Um, so every day next week, we'll have a grade level. Monday is ninth graders, Tuesday, sophomores, Wednesday, so on and so on. So um, it has been wonderful to see students back in the building, excited about the start of the school year. Um, so that is UMS sixth grade transition. And next is UHS summer transition. So um, we have juniors and seniors, sophomore, freshman. Uh, and this has been promoted on social media. So you've probably seen it. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar. Back to school night is August twelfth. Uh, we are doing this in person outside. Um, we will have um, several of our community partners available. Uh, we'll be running a uh, recruitment fair um, at the same time. Um, we will have a vaccination clinic at the same time. Um, we want to offer a lot of uh, resources to our families. Um, MTD will be there for students. Um, uh, before and after school care. So we'll have a lot of um, opportunities for families who may not um, have been able to work out their bus arrangements or they have questions about signing up for before or after school. If you come um, Thursday, August twelfth, five thirty, we'll be outside in the um, grass area um, between the middle school and high school and under the awning outside. Uh, we will provide a very light um, meal, nothing heavy, but just something that um, families can come and still have a little snack and not have to worry about dinner. Um, and get some resources at the same time. We'll also be giving away school supplies. As you know, um, last year we had school supply drives literally every, every quarter. Students and families could come and get these supplies that they needed to uh, work at home. Um, so we're going to give out uh, school supply bags, the little zip, the, what do they call them? Swing bags? Full, yes, swing backpacks full of uh, the school supplies for the students. So those will be just giveaways. Um, so yeah, we're looking forward to that as well. Uh, we just shared today, all the schools have also um, been putting out their back-to-school nights. Uh, we've had a lot of conversations with our administrators about how they can do those safely. And so every school has been working with their staff to offer kind of a meet the teacher. You know, again, we have kindergartners, yes, who are new to the building, but our first graders are like kindergartners this year because they've never, many of them have never walked in the building. Um, so uh, our administrators are putting together with their building level committees, um, some opportunities to meet the teachers, come back and revisit um, and kind of see the spaces again in a, in a safe way. We're going to um, offer our juniors and seniors a student leadership summit. Um, we're trying to do um, more one-on-one activities with our young people. Um, I know that's been a board um, goal is for student leadership on the board. So we're also um, trying to reach out um, in our community to engage all students. But um, this event, we really are wanting to make sure that some of our um, students who may be experiencing some of that draw or toward uh, community violence or just some of our students that have been disengaged with learning or um, who just need someone to say, hey, I've been there. I've walked in your shoes. And you know, this is how um, I've changed my life and you can change your life too. So Dr. Mayberry has a really personal story. Um, we've been sharing this link out and registering students. We're targeting our juniors and seniors. Um, but of course, if there's students and, and young people who want to be there for this leadership summit, uh, he'll be spending the day at UHS. Um, we are inviting our Self-Making students to be part of that. Um, Janice Mitchell has a lot of her neighborhood connection students who worked with him this spring. Um, actually in February, when he was here for one of our institutes. So they're going to reengage with him. We're also um, the night of the seventeenth, going to offer um, an opportunity for him to speak to some of those parents about how um, it, it may be hard for you to uh, keep your student engaged in school. And as a parent, uh, what, what can you do? And so um, just his life story and his journey is, is inspiring. And so we hope that he'll inspire a lot of our young people when he's here on August seventeenth. Vaccination clinics, I mentioned when we were talking about back to school. We have several vaccination clinic um, opportunities that we're promoting on social media. And we'll be sharing again with families. Um, we vaccinated uh, uh, families, uh, students, a, a couple of families and some staff members during registration last week. These are the upcoming uh, vaccination clinics um, that we will offer on the twelfth during Welcome Back to School Night. Um, also while our high school students, anytime that we can offer our high school students an opportunity to get the vaccine, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to do that. Um, we also started an incentive program. Our young people are so funny. So I emailed the junior, the freshman, juniors, freshmen, the class of twenty-two through and said, we are offering these vaccine clinics. If you sign up and get your vaccine and upload your card, then you're going to be um, available, even included in a drawing for a laptop. So we're going to, we're going to uh, give away two laptops um, for our students who can show that they've had their second um, dose or their second shot by a certain time period in September. So just a way to incentivize. And I've been, I was surprised at registration. Uh, we had a couple of recent twenty-twenty grads who came through registration with their younger siblings. And they said, well, I'm vaccinated. Do I get to be entered? And I said, no, sorry, you're not our student anymore, but I wish we could give you a computer to use in college, but we can't. Um, so hopefully that will, you know, if we have students that are on offense about getting the vaccine or families, then maybe that might be something that might incentivize them to do that. And last but not least, I really want to thank our um, central office, this group of people who um, just went above and beyond. I don't even know, like get the major gold star um, for helping our move. We, as you know, we moved and we did it in about a week or two week, two weeks really. Um, I want to thank Randy and um, Tyler McKinney um, and Tony um, from Tony Dizel, who kind of really uh, worked with the students directly, but Randy and Tyler uh, provided the leadership. And all of these young men and women, uh, we had some of our custodians who came in and worked on their days off. Um, on Fridays, you know, in the summer, we're not open on Fridays. And so we had custodians coming in on Fridays. We had people come over on Saturdays, helping us paint. Um, because you know, we had a lot of spaces that just needed a lot of love. And um, so I'm not going to read all their names, but I just want them all to know how much we appreciate them. And um, they just worked tirelessly and we really appreciated it. It saved the district thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. We rented a U-Haul truck and we had all these folks just pitch in and move us. So we didn't have to pay um, packers and movers and a moving company, um, just like Urbana does, right? We all just pitched in and, you know, rolled our sleeves up and everybody was moving together. So um, I just wanted to publicly thank all of them.
So it's a board reports?
I, I wanted to ask a quick question, Jennifer. I think I mentioned it to you last week. If um, Randy or anybody in facilities would be willing to give a little brief update on what's been happening around the campus, the UHS campus. I know um,
Oh.
Cause I know I saw the concrete coming down at the front on the Ray Street entrance. And also they're doing some paving on the, the um, parking lot there. So if you wouldn't, would it be okay if you gave us an update on what's going on for the neighbors who are asking?
We ta, I talked about it a little bit in the paper today. So they highlighted it, which was nice. I can, Randy, or you can? Go ahead.
I'll do it. Um, the, we increased our student parking lot, doubled the size of it, got additional thirty-some spots probably. Um, the other stuff going around the high school and middle school is a part of the campus land use. Um, and those would be just outdoor classroom areas, uh, places for the kids to go out and eat lunch. Um, stuff like that. They did the courtyard tour at the middle school. If you haven't seen those, you can still look at both of them. Um, and then uh, was there four spots around the high school, I think?
Is the, is the paving that's happened to the, to the east of the high school? That's um, where we tore down one of the buildings and then there's, it's gravel. You, like you said, even, is that permanent or is that going to be temporary as we're still developing the rest of all the land use stuff that we planned on in years?
We left it as gravel, just so it's a temporary park, I mean, it's going to be parking spots, but it'll be a temporary. And then once the campus land use study goes further, it'll, I'm sure it'll be, it will be taken out.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought because of the,
Yes.
the way we planned up the pedestrian walkways and all that kind of stuff.
That part is part of the final uh, campus land use study project. So that would be part of the expansion to the actual asphalt parking lot.
Right. Well, it's just exciting to see it. I mean, it, we've talked about it for so long and then, oh, it's here, you know? So it's kind of nice to see it starting to take shape. So thank you for that.
And we, we weren't able, you know, we didn't add all the permeable seating and all the fancy seating that you've seen in a lot of drawings on those concrete spaces because um, you know, we're using some of our ESTER funding to do that because it allows us to socially and physically distance the students during lunch. Um, so whenever we go back to the campus land use, then we'll look at um, putting uh, better seating in all those spaces. Right now, we're just going to be using picnic tables. Um, and we've already purchased those and those will be kind of strategically placed on those spots where kids can then go out and sit and have lunch. Or um, teachers like the uh, west side, the Ray Street, um, concrete pads. I really see some of our staff members probably taking students out, you know, kind of utilizing that space when it's not lunchtime as possibly outdoor classroom space too, so.
I have a board report. I uh, was uh, privileged to participate yesterday in the introductions for uh, New Teacher Day. It was wonderful to see all the new teachers show up and, and all administrators gleefully uh, you know, announced the, their, their new hires to their buildings. It was, there was a ton of positive energy in, 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 in the, in the room. And, and uh, I think we've got a great bunch of, of, of new uh, new teachers here this year. So that was wonderful. Uh, any further board reports? So we do have an executive session tonight. Uh, it's, it's basically for, for litigation or pending litigation to the district formally. Uh, there will be an executive session after current meeting for the purpose of litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be reported and entered into the closed meeting minutes. Is there a motion to enter closest session for that purpose?
So. Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes, we'll take five minutes to clear the room and then we'll begin our executive session. Oh, sorry. You're right. There's, there is no action after the, it's closed of the executive session tonight.